... meeting for the City of Hudson for October, Monday, October 22 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible] 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 Say Devon, can she settle you down? Can you keep Devon settled down?
[inaudible]
Okay, thank you very much, really appreciate it. We have one other proclamation, I'd like to read that now. Mr. Dan DeBois is here. His brother died of pancreatic cancer two years ago?
Yes, sir.
And so, this is a resolution or proclamation for pancreatic cancer awareness month. Whereas in 2012, an estimated 43,920 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 37,390 will die from the disease. And whereas the cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, approximately 760 deaths will occur in Wisconsin in 2012. And whereas the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 74% of pancreatic patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of the cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas there's no cure for this cancer, there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. And whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the other leading cancer killers. This cancer research continues to only approximate 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding figure is far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And where Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the cancer community of Wisconsin and nationwide in focusing its efforts on public money, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and educated related to developing effective treatments and cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network supports those patients currently battling cancer as well as those who have lost the lives of loved ones to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. I therefore, now therefore, I Mayor Allen Burchill declared November 12 as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the city and will call upon all citizens in Hudson to raise their awareness about pancreatic cancer, early detection, and research on causes and effective treatment and the cure for this disease. So that, you'll be getting it in the mail.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet. Comments and suggestions from the citizens present? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Yes, Kim.
First of all, I would like to thank you, council, for your continued support of the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau. The reason I'm here tonight, though, is to invite you and the viewing audience to our Christmas tour of homes, which is coming up very quickly, November 16, 17, and 18. This is our 27th year of doing this event and brings thousands of people to town to enjoy our community. We have five privately owned homes that are opening their doors, including then in addition to that is a historic octagon house museum that decks out for the holidays, too, so it's part of our tour. On the traditional tour, as we all know it, is the Saturday and Sunday of November 17 and 18, and we do have tickets for sale for that now, in addition to two newer events that happen on that Friday evening before, November 16. And that is our dazzle tour, which is being able to see the homes at night when they're most beautiful. In addition to that Friday night also, which is our black tie affair that we do, that is a transportation provided gala where we view the homes together and then end up at Urban Olive and Vine for an after-party. So, we have three options, again, the traditional tour, November 17 and 18, and five privately owned homes in the octagon house. We encourage you all to call us and buy a ticket. We also have a craft sale that goes on, on that Saturday at the Hudson House Grand Hotel. So, thank you again.
One more time, the dates, so that everybody gets the dates.
I know, I wasn't sure if we were on-
Now you are.
-November 16, 17, and 18. The 16th is the Friday, which includes the dazzle tour and the black tie. The traditional tour is Saturday and Sunday, on the 17th and 18th, with the craft sale being on that Saturday, and that's free to attend. So tickets are for sale at the Chamber office in addition to three locations in town, which would be the Hudson House, Seasons on St. Croix Gallery, and Lavender Times. So, we hope you all come. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda for tonight? Yes. Go ahead, yep, if you could give us your name and address.
My name is Kristen Wilcox. Want my mailing address?
No, just your address, sure.
Well, I live in Roberts.
Okay.
I apologize, I think there's been a miscommunication. We were at the public safety meeting and we got bumped to this meeting because they weren't able to address our concerns. And I confirmed with Marty, but it doesn't look like we made the agenda, so I'm wondering if I can still address our concerns.
Is it on the agenda?
Candlelight, the horse drawn carriage?
Yeah.
It's on there.
It's on the back.
It's on there. So we'll get to it, Kristen.
Okay, I didn't see it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I thought I did, too. Anyone else? All right, consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of October 1, 2012, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $668,029.47, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of six regular operators licenses for the period October 23, 2012, to June 30, 2013. Excuse me, that's 2014. Additional operator license application is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the appointment of Connie Dreveling, 191 West Canyon Drive, as a Republican election inspector for the term November 7, 2012, through December 31, 2013, with the additional consideration that after training, she may also serve as a special registration deputy or special voting deputy for election-related duties at the Christian Community Home. To approve designating the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau annual holiday tour of homes as a community event. To approve reallocating room tax funds of $1,200 from the banners account to $200 for the band shell programs and $1,000 for vintage ornaments. To approve the removal of one parking space at the southeast corner of First Street at Vine Street. To approve closing Second Street between Vine Street and Walnut Street for light-up night on November 23, 2012, from 6:30 PM to 7:45 PM. To approve a painted pedestrian walkway on the west side of 13th Street from Summer Street to Cooley Road, and that all crosswalk paint be refreshed. To approve installation of a stop sign on Willis Miller Drive at Heiser Street. To approve the removal of two parking spaces and parking meters at the northeast corner and southeast corner of Second Street at Commercial Street, with no parking signs installed and the meters to be reinstalled when the Stillwater Bridge reopens.
Can you pull that, please?
Number five.
Yes, please.
Okay.
To approve the use of horse-drawn carriages on November 30, candlelight stroll event using a new route that crosses Second Street only at the traffic light-controlled intersections.
Can we pull that?
To place on file the quarterly reports of the police chief, fire chief, and building inspector, the monthly report of the finance officer, and the October 9, 2012 minutes of the Public Utility Commission, the September 26, 2012 minutes of the Advisory Joint Fire Board, and the September 28, 2012, and October 17, 2012 minutes of the St. Croix EMS Commission. And that is all.
Motion?
Would you approve?
Okay, second, full call.
T-Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Okay. First order of business in the Finance Committee was a review of payment in lieu of taxes from the Hudson Housing Authority for Croweview apartment complex, 1015 Second Street.
Representatives of the Housing Authority approached the mayor, and we sat in, Mayor Devon and I met with them, with regard to the payment in lieu of taxes. The payment in lieu of taxes originates from the agreement that created the Housing Authority in 1966. The payment to the city is a little bit, it's averaged a little bit under $10,000 a year. And what it's based on is the assessed value of the property as determined by our assessor times the city's tax rate. So the city collects those funds, those funds go into our general fund, and are used to offset the operations and in theory, the costs of providing services to the complex. There was, and we talked about it, Finance, and at Finance, we distributed the, a set of financial statements. Their last audited statements for the year ended September 30, 2011.
I'd like to move the table this to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, so the council members have further opportunity to review their budget and to allow Croweview or the Housing Authority to have a representative here to speak to the issue.
I'll second that.
What was the recommendation that came out of Finance?
Finance was a two-to-one vote to deny the request.
Okay. Was Croweview aware that this was on the agenda?
I believe, yes.
She's here.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, well.
Can we hear?
Well, do you want to, we have a motion.
We have a motion for now, yeah.
Okay, is it, are you okay with a second to withdraw? Did you, John?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want to come up and speak to the-
Of course, we're all facing budget cuts. And the US Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development, has urged all of the housing authorities throughout the nation to approach their cities to see if there is a way that we can lower it. There have been communities where it has been relinquished completely in order to help the Housing Authority. I do believe we're probably the only tax-exempt property that pays property taxes. And 45, 50 years ago, that worked well for the Housing Authority, but we've experienced almost up to 10% budget cuts in the last five years. And so, it would be helpful for us, we understand the city has, is in the same position as we are, but for budgeting purposes, it would be, we would be willing to just have it reduced if possible. I think our payment this year was a little over $11,000, which is a huge amount for a small housing authority. I would recommend that if the, if the city isn't able to just let it go completely, that if we could budget an amount, and I mean, even if it was in the area of $5,000, something that each year we knew we could plan for, that would be helpful. I think we're a well-managed property, we do a lot for the community. We are able to provide tax revenue bonding, to provide other housing opportunities. We answer a lot of people's calls to us looking for housing and other needs in our community. So, I feel like we're, we're a great asset, our residents are a great asset, many of them do volunteer work in our community. So, that, that would be our request, is that we could, if, if anything, at least reduce it and have an amount that we'd be able to budget for.
Questions?
Okay, a couple of questions.
Yep.
Is it Jody, is it?
Jody.
No, I just received this budget, so I'm trying to understand it and try to make an informed decision. You have a net income of $32,000 in your total income column, with your assets a little greater than that. So now, I'm wondering if, where's the benefit to your residents if we were to do away with that tax or reduce it?
The money, the money that would not be spent toward the pilot would be used to improve the property for our residents, improve it as far as services and in rehab. And we are a 45-year-old property, so those costs have really skyrocketed.
How many, how many residents, how many apartments are within-
Originally, there were 61 units, and to become more marketable, more viable in the community, we have combined some of the small, so now we are down to soon to be 51 units. So we have, you know, when we're full, we're approximately 55 residents, because some are two bedrooms.
Is it true you're receiving almost $145,000 in HUD grants for capital improvement?
We receive approximately $60,000 in operating subsidy to subsidize the rents that are paid at 30% of adjusted income. And we receive approximately, it's become less every year, last year, $43,000 in capital funding to maintain the property.
So maintain, and do you have any other things coming down the pipe, major capital improvements?
We, we do a five-year plan, and we've done a five-year plan for the past 15 years, and we have not been able to, to complete all the projects that are on our five-year plan. We are in need of a new roof, we are in need of new siding. We recently applied for emergency capital funding to put in a new boiler system. So, our needs are not met through HUD at this time.
How many, how many HUD, how many HUD facilities do we have in Hudson?
That's the only one, isn't it?
There, there's many different programs, there's Section 202s, they're privately-owned low-income housing, but they, the most recent one, Heirloom Courts, who came in, is 100% subsidized at 30% of adjusted income. That goes through WIDA and, um, different programs than us. We are the only public housing in Hudson.
And then they, they all pay taxes still on? This would be, yeah.
The Hudson Authority does not pay property taxes, correct?
We pay the pilot, the payment in lieu of tax, which is originally 10% of our shelter rents, so we're always paying. But in 2003, we contacted the city, and we were paying the shelter rent, but to make it a little bit less, and sometimes it was a savings of $3,000 to $5,000, that we only paid the city's portion of the tax rather than the county and the schools and state.
So have you approached any of the other?
They don't pay.
Well, they don't.
They only pay city.
They only pay city, and that's by statute.
So what I'm hearing is this is a unique facility within the city? Is it the only one, like it, that pays a payment in lieu of taxes?
Correct.
We are.
That we're aware of, yep.
And so, the precedence for, there's no precedent for waiving it or reducing it? We have a policy on the books?
Well, the statute allows this, and the statute governing housing authorities allows this city to require a payment in lieu of taxes. And there's this 1966 agreement on the books. There's history where one other tax-exempt entity, the Christian Community Home, for a few years before my time, made payments to the city. I don't know that there was a written agreement, but they stopped because it was nothing that the city could require.
I don't believe there was a written agreement with them, from what I was told.
But the difference between the, that and the Housing Authority is that the statute specifically allows the city to set a payment in lieu of taxes.
I just have a problem when it's the federal government that's kind of putting pressure on the local level to get rid of this. They print money, we can't. I just, I think it sets a, if there's an agreement in place, I would be in favor of maybe, I don't know, if we could set a cap and then have it be only an increase based on cost of living, or-
Well, the way it works under the statute and under the agreement, the way it should work, is it can't exceed the city's tax rate as applied to the assessed value of that property. So that's the statutory cap, it can't go beyond that. Within that, you can, you know, reduce it, reduce it for a period of years, not reduce, I mean, you're pretty much able to decide what you want to do.
So I guess I'd be willing to consider setting a limit for X number of years, whether it's $10,000 or $8,000, but I'm, I guess I'm not in favor of seeing it go away at this point.
What is the agreement at this point, 10% of shelter?
Well, this is a 1966 agreement, and I don't, you know, maybe the statute was different at that time. It provided for certain percentage of shelter rents, and then the city was to distribute out to the county and to the other taxing jurisdictions, which isn't what the statute even authorizes now. So, I think what would need to happen is, if you decide to do something, this agreement would need to be amended. You'd want to do that anyway, just to make it conform to the statute and to document what, what your decision is.
Is it possible to come up with a flat fee?
Well, it can't exceed, it would have, as long as it doesn't exceed the tax rate as applied to their assessed value, yes, you could do that.
Can you tell us what common practice is today in general? I mean, is this, is Hudson statute typical, or is that just a-
I think back in 1966, this was very generic with every housing authority that, that was started. That was, that was the beginning of all the housing authorities, and that, and it was recommended by HUD to, to do a cooperation agreement with the city, and that we would pay 10% of our shelter rents, which was not a difficult thing 45, 50 years ago, but now we have a building that's in need of a lot of repair, and we actually have residents that, that are probably not, their income limits are so low that, I mean, we basically run the Housing Authority off the rents with the operating subsidy, and then our capital funding takes care of the building. And, and prior, probably seven to 10 years ago, there wasn't even capital funding, there was competitive grant awards called SEAP, and housing authorities could normally apply for those, and you would get all of the work done that you needed to do. But as budgets became tighter, even at HUD, they couldn't afford to do that anymore, so they went to just a, a certain amount per the number of units you have, which means you have to save up three or five years' worth of capital funding, in our case, to put a roof on the place, which is pretty impossible to do these days.
So, and, and I'm just going to throw this out as a potential number, at $10,000 with 50 units, it's $200 per unit, per year, or $16 a month, per unit. You know, I think it's important to kind of look at what we're asking for, and that's just a possibility. I mean, we could say half of that. I mean, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to suggest that we set a rate and stick with that for X number of years, to help with budgeting purposes. I just don't feel like it's reasonable for the federal government to push it down on the city and say, "We would like you to take the hit entirely."
Is it $11,000 right now, right?
I think it was nine, 99, 2011.
For this year, what is due, from what the assessor sent me, it would be, it's a little over $11,000.
So I'd make a motion, if you're willing to entertain one.
Sure.
That we would set it at $10,000 for a period not to exceed five years, and that we revisit it at that time.
Not to exceed the assessed value.
Right, if the, correct, if that $10,000 is more than what's allowed, it would be lowered.
Times assessed value.
Assessed value.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, discussion.
Five, five years, you want to do this?
Mayor?
Just taking a second, let's see if there's any others, then I'll, yep.
You think it's five years?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
I guess I'm not, the federal thing, I understand that the federal government makes adjustments, but, I mean, here's a facility that's working on behalf of our residents in need, and it seems to me that they're already making, having a hard time making it, so the extra, you know, I could see $5,000 maybe, but what are we doing, where does the revenue benefit us that we're sort of taking away from the facility itself? I guess, that's kind of where I'm at.
My issue with it is, it's not a question of whether or not the people there are in need. I think you're seeing people struggling all across the city in a wide variety of situations. And to pick and choose, you know, whose taxes we're going to adjust, if you will, I think it starts getting into a slippery slope. So it's a, it's a policy we've had on the books if, I mean, I think this is a reasonable adjustment, and it's not like we're, you know.
Let's make it clear that this is not a tax, so, that's what we were told in Finance.
It's payment in lieu of taxes.
It's not a tax, is what you said.
No, it's not a tax. I mean, it's, they're tax exempt, but the statute has built in the authority of the city to require or set a payment in lieu of taxes not to exceed city rate times-
So how much of that goes to the, is it spread the same way? The whole thing comes to us?
That's correct. They're not-
Yeah, it does not, it's only the city, because the-
The city's portion.
-city is providing the services, that's the basis on which the payment in lieu of taxes, that's the basis for it. The city's providing services and recouping payments.
So this is an attempt to lower it and freeze it essentially for five years?
Yes, you had a question.
With due respect, last year we paid $9,945, the year before, $10,013. In 2009, $7,600, 2008, $9,700, 2007, $9,200. It was around $9,500 back to 2004, 2003, and 2002 were close to $11,000. It was, and it's been $10,000 to $11,000 since '92.
Okay.
And it's a burden.
So you understand, it could never, even if you set a rate at $10,000, it could never, if that exceeds what the current tax rate is-
Right, it would never exceed that.
You can't collect more than that.
So if one is owed $7,600, it's $7,600.
$10,000 or the current city share, whichever is the lowest.
Yeah, you're setting a cap on it, what it sounds like is you're setting a cap on it.
So, so the $11,000 right now all goes to the city? But if it were taxed normally, about $2750 would be coming to the city, and the rest would be spread out between the county, the school.
This is just the city portion.
I know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm looking at, I'm looking at it in a different-
The taxes would be higher.
Different angle, yeah, the taxes would be higher.
He's 75% higher.
Yeah, so, that's what I was kind of getting to.
It could be $40,000 instead of $10,000.
Could be $40,000, yeah.
That's what I was kind of getting to.
What are the city services we provide?
What are the city services we provide? I mean, what are, what are we doing?
Same as we do for everyone else, fire and, and snow plowing and EMS.
Street.
EMS.
EMS, so we're paying for all the services out of this fund?
Just like we do for any, anybody. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I, I'm a little concerned with five years. I'd be more in favor of a three-year agreement if we're going to do anything at all. I just don't like a five-year period of time.
And I guess I'm looking at what we've looked at over the last five years, and there's nothing in there that suggests to me it would change drastically from that. I don't see anything. I don't see ten and twelve and fifteen. I'm seeing mostly numbers that are less than ten.
Unless we're going to increase taxes a lot, huh?
I'm sorry?
Unless we're going to increase taxes a lot.
I don't anticipate that, Mr. Mayor.
I don't either.
We'd be paying four thousand more this year than we did in two thousand and nine.
And a thousand dollars less than this year for next year.
Right, for, for two thousand and eleven, we paid ninety-nine, and two thousand and twelve is eleven, four fifty.
Yep.
Can I call the question, please?
Sure. Any, um, question's been called. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have an application of Crusader Hockey for a temporary class retailer's license to sell beer on ten twenty-seven from six to ten P.M. at the John Gornick Arena at eighteen-twenty Hanley Road. Nancy, I guess I can, we've had a change in the application from, from Finance, and they have, they have changed the service area to the mezzanine area, and it will be restricted to adults only in that mezzanine area.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consider no parking on southeast and northeast corners of Second Street at Commercial Street. Mr. Vanslow asked to pull it?
No, that was me.
Oh, yep.
Yep.
Yep, don't confuse us.
I know. You've got the next one, right?
It would be a compromise. Randy asked me to pull it, so more or less to just explain what's going on.
Okay.
And that is, due to the bridge closing, we have, we were trying to figure out in safety how we can keep the flow of Second Street moving a little, a little more easily. We talked about no left turns on most of the lights. We decided that that would not be conducive. But the one thing that Alder Person Hoggit observed was the congestion was really at Commercial and Second, because there wasn't enough room with the meters for cars to go around if there was a car turning west from Second Street onto Commercial. So.
So you'd say the corner is by the art gallery and the scuba store?
Does that be correct?
Yeah, that side, this side.
The cars would be going north, and the cars coming from behind weren't able to kind of go around on the right-hand side.
Okay.
So we thought for, just for temporary, until I think we set the date for December twenty-first or somewhere in there, we would remove those, we would remove those two meters. And so that cars will be able to have enough access to go around and continue straight down Second Street, so the flow of traffic will continue. And then after the construction is done with the bridge, the meters will be reinstated.
So they're just going to be covered temporarily?
They have a little screw on that says, "Don't park here."
Yeah, because we thought about just covering them, but apparently those covers get stolen, so we had to make something a little more permanent.
Yeah, I'm just thinking for someone who's pulling into the spot, it'd be nice before you found that the meter wouldn't take, I mean, how are they going to know?
It's a whole sign. They remove the whole meter, and then there's, there's a sign that says you can't park there.
There's actually no meter in there.
Yep.
And then the meter will just pop right back in when the construction is done, and it'll continue like it always had.
Thank you.
So that's.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, Mr. Vanslow, is review use of horse-drawn carriages downtown during November thirtieth candlelight stroll event.
The only reason I asked for it to be pulled is that it was supposed to have a route which did not cross at an intersection that wasn't, that didn't have a light at it. But it's coming back across Locust Street, and that does not have a light at it.
Locust Street has a light.
No.
No, it doesn't.
No, Locust Street doesn't have a light.
That's where Mickelson's is, Wells Fargo.
Oh, you heard me.
So there's no light, so this, so this comes back, back across Vine, not Vine Street, comes back across Second Street where there isn't a light, with all the traffic that we've got. The recommendation from Marty was to reroute this so that it comes back across a light. And I don't see the rerouting. So that's the only reason I pulled it.
Kristen, do you have any comments to that, or, yep?
I missed that. I thought Locust had a light.
I know you'll have an answer, right?
Thank you. My name is Dawn Marquardt. I live at ten-ten Tenth Street North, Hudson. I, I agree. Thank you for letting us come to you with this, because we want to keep this a very safe evening. What we had basically talked about is the horse and carriage rides usually take off from the arch. And they go down First Street south to Buckeye, and then go to Second Street. And then they always go downtown through, on Second Street. And we thought, this year, instead of going back down on Locust to go all the way to Vine Street, and then go right or east, and then come back and then cross down at Walnut. So we would, the only places we would cross would be Buckeye and Walnut, where there are stoplights.
Does that answer your question, Rich?
As long as they're crossing with lights, it's okay with me.
Okay.
Marty, you okay with that?
I guess that sounds different than the road, such as Walnut, the third, Divine, Locust.
Yeah, I, I didn't think Second Street, I didn't think Second Street was involved. I mean, if we have a whole line full of traffic because of the bridge, do we really want to have horse-drawn vehicles?
Marty, what, what route did you have?
Well, there were, there were two routes on the plan that you had given us.
This is the original.
Right, and this is the route that I presented to them, up Walnut Street and Third. Third, Divine, up to Sixth Street, over to Locust Street, and back down again, with it coming back to Walnut.
Back to Third.
Third, down to Walnut Street. Because I agree, there's, if you go down Second Street, you're going to, we're going to have problems, I think, with those horses and all that traffic.
So it's going back to Locust, Marty, and coming down Third Street to Walnut?
So all we're doing is passing, crossing Second, crossing Second Street at Walnut Street, and then you're on Third, Vine, Sixth to Locust Street, Locust to Third, back to Walnut, and then back down again.
Don, can you live with that?
Yeah, I guess so. You know, the whole idea is to showcase downtown, but maybe next year we can go back.
I think with the traffic from the bridge, it, I don't know, what do you folks think?
Yeah, I mean, as nice as it would be, I think it probably might not be a safe plan and.
We also thought about shortening the route. The route is usually from six to nine. That's the, the three hours of the event. And we thought it might be helpful, too, to just do the horse-drawn carriage rides from six-thirty to eight-thirty and cut out an hour. And that might help a little bit, too, with the evening traffic.
Okay.
Of course, we, we were, like, Dawn said, we wanted to be down Second Street, which on the, on the math that I sent Marty, it has the two routes. And naturally, we're going to try to promote downtown, and we would, that's our first choice. And the route that Marty's referencing and the one that I emailed him about was the alternative. If the council did say it, you know, did come back with concerns on that. So I think that, just to clarify on that, that's kind of where we're at, if there's any confusion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve it with the route that Marty suggested.
Is everybody, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
At the, for the same timeframe, six-thirty to eight-thirty?
Six to nine or six-thirty to eight-thirty. I think since we're not crossing, or since we're not going down.
As long as we're not crossing the, yeah.
Yep. All right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Park board, request of Mike Keely to operate a pedal cab in Lakefront Park. Come on up, Mr. Keely.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you having me this evening. Went to the park board a few weeks ago and proposed the pedal cab business just down in the Lakefront Park with primary access and transportation just to and from the beach and the shoreline on the Dyke.
Okay.
Now, my, my storage would be up on Fourth Street. The only time I'd ever have to leave the park would be to start and finish each day.
Did you approach us earlier, or was it someone else?
I did not.
Okay, okay. So it would be mainly on the Dyke Road?
Yep.
Okay.
No, just to try to bring people back to business for lunch or any way to promote the business there along the Lakefront, probably from Dairy Queen all the way to Agave.
Okay.
And so you'd be primarily on the Dyke Road, but if you're on the street, you'd be on the street, not on the side?
No, the only time I'd ever enter the street is to and from our storage on Fourth Street.
So.
We would just bring people to the, to the Lakefront Park, basically to the archway, and then they'd have to walk.
Oh, got it, okay. When you said Agave and Dairy Queen, I'm, I thought you meant.
In Park, we discussed that his request is purely in Lakefront Park, not out on trafficked roads or.
Okay, got it. In that case, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say I'd make a motion to approve this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Where, where's the storage on Fourth Street going to be? Why am I?
Storage, I don't, I didn't, I didn't put that in the summary. It's a friend of mine's house. He's allowing me to use his garage.
Okay.
John Torrey, local, local guy here.
That's fine, I was just, didn't know where it was.
Four oh two, Fourth Street, I believe?
Okay.
Mike, your insurance is?
Insurance certificate.
Yep, that'll probably be part of the motion, I would think.
Contingent upon.
Yep.
Insurance has already been approved. I just, I just, I'll take this step first.
Okay. Cool. Is that okay with a second that we add the insurance thing? Okay. John, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Yes, you will. One more minute. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Update on projects. I think we have, Karen's on vacation. Tom, do you want to update us?
Two thousand and twelve street improvement projects are, have basically been completed. Grandview Drive, the only remaining item is picking, picking up some barricades and finishing up the sod work. The alley improvements off of River Street, basically done there, except for picking up some of the signs and barricades also. Lake Maloo Storm Sewer Project hasn't really started yet. Contracts have been signed, and residents on Maloo Drive and Sunset Lane have been notified that the job will be starting soon.
We're going to be able to get that done before the end of the year, before the, we're trying, huh?
We're certainly trying, yes.
Okay.
Sidewalk program is basically completed. We did do some storm water, or storm retention pond mowing the last few weeks. So we got some of those mowed, if you've seen those. Some of the street maintenance projects, they'll, those have all been completed, the crack filling, and we did some flex patching on St. Christ Street, if you've noticed that.
Okay. Questions for Tom? Thanks for the update.
The Grandview project was very well done.
Yep.
Very well, a lot of confidence in it, yeah. Came out really well.
In fact, I think they've finished up most of the sod today, or pretty, almost done?
Nope.
Okay.
At least not for narrow.
Three quarters of it?
Yeah, three quarters of it.
Okay. Next, we have a closed session pursuant to nineteen dash, nineteen point eight-five Wisconsin statute to determine whether to purchase property for the city of Hudson. Like a motion to go into closed session, please.
So moved.
Second.
We need a roll call on that?
Yep. Teewiko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.